The clock ticks at 9:00 a.m. The date is December the 12th. The county council is convening. We will be led in the pledge to the flag by Mr. Jason Rodden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and welcome. We have a couple of members absent this morning. Miss Lassiter's out of town, and Mr. Bledsoe has some compulsory training with his employment that he couldn't avoid. I have a note from him this morning. So... Has the agenda been posted properly?
Yes.
Okay. All those approved. Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe. Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter. Mr. Matchit.
Present.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the amendments on November the 28th.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Move Jessica, second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes. Now I need a motion to approve the amendments for the 2018 budget hearings.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Scott. Roll call, yeah.
Those are for the council meetings for next year. The dates, the dates.
Oh, excuse me. Well, it's during the same dates. I thought that was...
No, we already did that last week.
Okay, well, my fault.
I'll still move to approve the dates.
Move to approve the dates for the 2018 council meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please. Do we need to take away the previous motion, or are we okay with that?
You just amended it.
Move by... As corrected, okay? There we go. I'm sorry, I didn't interpret it properly.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes. Wouldn't hurt to do it again, I guess.
Okay, we will move right along to the transfer agenda.
Okay. County clerk, C-122, clerk circuit four, minus $1,043.19. D-122, plus $1,043.19. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a question. Why are we doing that one, and I have three of both of them?
Because you don't have the right agenda in front of you.
Yeah, that's cool. But I don't have my computer.
Is there... She resent it.
Yep.
Here, I'll get it.
Thank you, sir.
I had her put on the 2018s at the bottom so we could talk about those.
Sir, would you hand me one, too, please?
I'll have more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got to read your emails.
Well, I did. That's why I was a little late. That's why I'm on the computer, but I didn't see anything that told me to do. Okay. We have a... Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Tell me who it was.
Scott and Jessica.
Second by Ms. Piper.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Public defender, $185 transcript fees, plus $1,680. $313 psychological testing, minus $1,680. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call.
Just FYI, we didn't have a finance committee meeting, so if you have any questions, ask.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Sheriff, $199 holiday, minus $16,000. $198 part-time, plus $1,000. $197 overtime, plus $15,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica.
Right here.
Any questions? Kind of interesting, though. We were looking for some transfers the other day. We didn't find any, and now all of a sudden we've got $15,000.
There's nobody here to ask any questions?
Well, I just thought I'd point that out. I'm sure everybody thought the same thing I did. So, we can do about it now. Except we could turn this down, I guess. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay. Now, from here on down, all these that I'm going to read to you are 2018 salaries. Since I can't automatically put... Do the transfer for salaries since we changed the ordinance. These people know, these departments from here down, well, the next five, I guess, all have employees that need to get paid that first paycheck in January. So, I said, turn them in. I'll go ahead and present them to council and tell them that these are transfers that we need to do January 1st for the 2018 budget, so these people will be in place. This is going to happen between now and the end of the year, so I need some direction on what you want us to do. Otherwise, they're not going to replace people until the end of January, when you guys meet. I'm sure this is going to happen, more than what this is. It's just that these people know that they've got people that's going to draw that first paycheck in January. So, I said, turn them in. I'll go ahead and give them to council. We'll go ahead and have them approve the transfer effective January 1st, so these people... We can't put it in until we get the new budget in the system anyway, but it's just like the courts. She knows she's got somebody that's retired or quit, whatever, and she's working up till that last pay of this year, and then the new person will start, which should get a paycheck the first pay of January. That's how basically all these are, so...
All they're doing is...
Just transferring that total.
Replacing existing.
Replace, yeah. All those are new hires that we know is going to happen, but you guys don't meet till the end of January, so...
Well, Donna called me...
And so, I also need you...
Last week and asked me...
To tell us still, you know...
If you had to put these on here. Do you know who that is, what that number is, Emily? At this time, that we could put that in here?
Yeah. So, the numbers are already there.
I already gave you the number.
That we've already hired people for the budget that retire.
Oh.
Same as public defender. They've already hired somebody that just got to start till the 21st. It's just that we know this has to happen so that January pay happens.
I thought you meant you had additional to the... Another one besides these.
She's saying it's going to happen.
No, I'm saying it's going to happen, and what do you want Steve as the auditor to do? Do we go ahead and say, okay, replace them, or no? You've got to wait till the end of January when council meets.
Well, before we discuss that, it looks like to me there's six of them. Is that correct?
There is.
Including community correction.
One, two, three, four, five. No, stop, stop. Just the ones that say 2018, there's five of them. The clerk circuit court has two, a communication center, and the public defender.
Okay, you want to just make a motion to approve those five?
Yeah, you can just say the 2018 transfer.
I've got that last one. I had it personally put yesterday, and that spot would open up the 21st also. I tried to turn it in yesterday and was told that I just needed to bring that here.
So, you have an additional one besides this one?
Yes. That's why I said this is going to keep happening.
What line item is that?
Why don't we...
Well, let's just go ahead and approve these five, and then we'll work on yours separately, okay? Good idea, Scott.
Move to approve the five salary adjustments in the 2018 budget that are right here before you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call on those five.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, you want me to go on and finish the next two before we discuss the rest?
Let's just finish what's been printed, and then we'll do additional later.
Community corrections, 144 surveillance supervisor, minus 30... Well, I guess this is an 18, too. A-144, plus $37,069.25. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, Sheriff Corby, community corrections manager. Ours is not in 2018. Our budget doesn't end until June 30th.
Right.
So...
Okay.
You're just replacing a person?
Yes.
Got a motion in a second.
Motion with Scott, second with Jessica, correct? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
EMS capital improvement, 196 overtime, minus $4,300. 171 FICA, plus $4,300. 196 overtime, minus $6,000. 170 perp, plus $6,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Okay, do we want to address yours now?
Paul Singleton, Director 911. Denise, do you have that copy?
Mm-hmm. You want?
No, I have the copy. I just didn't know whether you had a copy for the council.
Yeah, you... I mean, I... No, I don't have a copy for the council. I have a copy for myself.
Well, we need you to do, Paul, just read us off the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. It's D-108.
Wait, what budget?
Uh, 124. I'm sorry.
Apartment 124.
D-108?
D-108 becomes E-108, and the transfer amount is $34,371. And this is 2018 money also.
You want to sit, Donna?
I'm sorry.
You want to sit?
No, I wrote it down and seated, Donna.
And this person, this was the last minute one yesterday, a preferred employee that couldn't come to work on time, so she's not there anymore.
Didn't pass probation, though. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve this request from Paul?
Second.
Paul, was... How long was that person, the D-108, there?
Um, since August.
Okay.
So, I don't know if this is going to be 100 percent, whether the new employee... If it's a part-timer, it could very well be 100 percent. If not, it'll be whatever the broker rate is.
You've got a part-timer that you're moving into E-108?
I've got three part-timers that I'm going to interview, and my guess is one of them's going to move into it. I actually got two openings now, so I've got three part-timers. So, all three have applied, so two of them will more than likely move up.
Roughly, how long have your part-timers been there?
Oh...
Are they pretty much... Have they trained, I guess?
They are close.
Okay.
They're just finishing up their initial training, and they're going on to the floor now, so they're not too far behind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Anymore before we motion?
Got to do it today. Get up here. Good morning, Rich Fangler, HR. I was notified by the auditors, obviously, yesterday afternoon that there wasn't enough money in the commissioner's part-time line to pay out the end of the year, so we need to ask for a transfer here to $6,500 from... Where can you get this out here, I'll bet you? From our lease rentals account, and that is $371, two part-time, $198.
Uh, need a motion?
What was the dollar amount again, Rick? $6,500.
Move to approve.
Where was that coming out of again?
Lease rental.
Do you have that number?
Yes, I do.
Are they going to use...
I have a motion, but no second.
Second.
There you go. Are they going to use $6,500 from now to the end of the year?
Yes. It's about on our... Why we did payrolls, about $4,800. So, we're going to use $4,800 for the last payroll, and we're $1,200 short for this payroll, $1,290 some, so that's where... So, we will use all of that money.
I have a problem with this personally. When we discussed these... All these positions and the... What would we call it? The wage rate level? We cautioned everyone that their part-time was somewhat flexible at their discretion, but if they paid more than they calculated for a level, maybe somebody got $12 instead of $10, they would have less. I'm just curious as to why this is this much over and nobody noticed it before now.
Yeah. I... Ron, I can't answer that question because I haven't worked this budget. I would just ask, come in here and ask for the transfer to get us that. I'm sure that you talked to the commissioners on that or see where the... Where the miscalculation came.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Well, I guess that's something that...
Excuse me?
I'm in the same position. I might hate to kind of buck this at the end of the year, but I mean, I'm on. There's only, you know, it's a part-time budget, and there's only so much money in there.
I understand your position. We're just at our side. We just got people that won't get paid tomorrow.
Well, again, I guess I just don't know. Have you found out, what, yesterday?
Yes. We were called the auditor's office, and that's how I got in.
I guess this is kind of like when you're a little kid and you said, "I won't do that again, Daddy."
Don't get me wrong.
Kind of pass the warning to us, please. Roll call.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Now...
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now I need a motion to approve the transfer and amendments to salary ordinance.
Motion to approve transfers and to amend the salary ordinance with like protections.
Second.
Oh. Maggie's got one, too.
Oh.
Sorry.
Well, excuse me, Maggie. I didn't see you second there.
I apologize.
I'm sorry. Well, we'll withdraw that motion in seconds for a moment, but draw that.
I will draw that.
Go ahead, Maggie.
We got contacted by the auditor's office as well. We have a door bailiff that their longevity roll in. They're going to be short.
Okay.
So, we need a transfer from line 129, A-143, into line 129, A-148.
That's a longevity roll in.
It's 60 percent. He took a position there wasn't enough to...
Right. In the budget, yeah. How much was it?
$2,481.
That's where a long-term employee moves in with a different position.
He went from investigator to investigator to a bailiff.
Okay. I want to make sure. Coming from A-143 into A-148.
Yep.
$2,481.
Yep.
Transfer promotion, I guess, Paul.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone move to approve that?
I'll second that.
Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Anyone else? Do you want one, too?
Yep.
Well, we're passing them out. We might as well give you one, too.
Well, we have... 155, B-120 is short. However, we have open lines right now as well. I believe this happened because we had one individual go into a paramedic line that wasn't a paramedic, and one paramedic that went into an EMT line that wasn't an EMT. So, one's short, one's over. So, requesting $2,321.73 from pay line A... I'm sorry, from 155, A-123 to pay line 155, B-120.
What's that EMT?
What was the first number?
A-143.
A-143 to B-120. Do you need this?
Yeah, I do.
Tell them.
Those are two...
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve that.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Just for an explanation to some in the audience, may or may not understand this little bit of confusion. Back a few years ago, it was always assumed that only the council could approve transfers in the 100 series, which are salaries and wages, and particularly one department started moving money within the 100 series, and when we got looking into it, challenged that, we found that that was not a state rule, and it didn't have a county ordinance either on the books. So, the council passed a county ordinance at that time that there would not be any transfers within the 100 series without council approval. Therefore, in December, we usually just approve transfers. But we've also changed the way we create these new positions for various reasons, and therefore, the county ordinance says that someone cannot be paid out of a former employee's position because that former employee may have had some benefits from their longevity, et cetera, that the new employee doesn't get. Part of that was to try to get a handle on the budget. So, therefore, it does look a little confusing, but it works. Some are reluctant to agree with it, but I like it because it saves money. And it does cause a little confusion, but we'll work it out. We're a team. We're trying to be a part of the team as a council and work with the staff and the elected officials, and I think that's what you saw here today. Now, I guess we need to discuss the dilemma if someone comes up next week. Do we want to put a motion on the floor this morning to temporarily give the auditor the permission to make those we would call emergency transfers within the 100 series in any department that the auditor feels is proper? Or do we want to cause a lot of discomfort because someone wouldn't be able to hire somebody till our January meeting, where a person had quit or retired? That's what's happening here, is that people are leaving positions. For a while, when the economy was pretty tough, we didn't have this turnover, but like Jason said, he's got people turning over at his place because they're paying bonuses in other communities of $5,000 and $10,000 to steal his paramedics away from him. Paul has a lot of problem with training of people, and his is a 24/7 operation that some people just can't cope with, even though they like that. It's pretty good pay. It's still a job that you have to learn. You have to have a little dexterity and a little up here, right?
Hope so.
And so, he has a pretty good turnover, so we tried to blend this all in. So, what's the pleasure, the council?
Well, I think I... I guess on what you just said, I think I would be okay with it as long as can you notify the president of the request and get his approval? We can... That way we can get... Get... Is that okay with you guys?
Okay. I'm available 24/7.
Yeah.
I was on the phone this morning before I came in.
Plus, I think that department should still turn it in to Denise.
Oh, definitely. Oh, definitely.
I just... I wanted to make sure that was...
That would have to formally be turned in to the auditor.
Okay.
And then if you guys want to let me sign off, I'd be glad to do it.
And then we'd still review those on...
Right.
...finance committee in January?
Well, we could review them in January and then just make a formal vote of them in January and have them in the minutes. That way that would be in accordance with our ordinance set.
Keep you happy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.[1638.37]
Keep the departments happy.
I'll need a motion of that effect. Did you get the old verbatim there?
I know.
Smith, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. That's so moved there. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
And I will say that, uh, this is the first time in eighteen, nineteen years. This is my nineteenth year on the council, and I've been president. And, uh, I've enjoyed a lot of cooperation from a lot of people. I've had to, uh, at times be a little maybe fatherly or a little pushy to maybe get people to do things. But I've also got a lot of phone calls from people asking me to help them out and get this kind of a procedure in place. And I appreciate all that very much. Yes, sir.
Joe Gruppa, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. I'm the chairman of the merit deputies bargaining unit for UAW. Uh, last year, we filed a grievance that, uh, two of our officers, two of our deputies did not receive longevity pay. Well, we worked that out with Human Resources and the auditor that they had not been hired in time for that year to receive the pay. But we were assured that this year they would receive the pay. I was advised by our CFO yesterday that, uh, their request for their longevity pay, that they are due right now, as per our contract, has been denied. I also, uh, understand that there's three jail officers and two nine-one-one, uh, personnel that are also in the same boat, but, uh, I, I don't know for sure about them.
Mr. Gruppa, I, I'm aware of the situation, and I've been in contact with our attorney, who has been in contact with Mr. Brooke. And I know that's trying to be resolved, but I haven't been notified.
Well, we.
I took it upon my own shoulders to say that, uh, I believe that the council would probably go along with this, but the council, when Mr. Matchit was president, passed a ordinance that discontinued, uh, longevity and, but I was, I've always felt the council wanted to honor contracts. And so, I think the council, what I've said, I think the council, okay? I can't vote for everybody, would, uh, be in agreement to place those on that are eligible during this current contract, but that we would not want to go beyond that because our ordinance would then be prevalent.
Well, we are in the midst of contract negotiations, and I can't speak directly to that. But these are one of the, one of the topics that's going to be discussed in our negotiations. But as of right now, the contract is in effect. The state that they are due that longevity pays. So, everybody gets paid tomorrow for longevity, except now it'll be these two officers and the fourth from jail, and I believe two from nine-one-one. So, can you get authorization to put them on the roll so that they get paid as per the contract that's currently in place?
So, to the council, I would have to have a motion. I can't do that.
I, I don't have anything that tell, other than you standing up here, which I don't discount it. It's just that we don't have anything that's been brought to us from, uh, county attorney. But to my knowledge, I mean, I haven't seen anything on it until you got up here and spoke, so.
I, Curtis, I'm president, UAW three-twenty-one. I'm also an investigator for Delaware County Sheriff's Office. I emailed John Brooke last week, and he told me that he contacted all you guys and your attorneys. And that, uh, he kind of agrees that the contract supersedes the ordinance. The contract was signed in two thousand and ten. The ordinance is what, two thousand and eleven dash three-seven-A or something like that, I think.
But you're not taking a position on our ordinance that it would be in effect after this contract expires?
Uh, that's all a negotiation.
That's what I mean.
Going through right now.
So, you're asking us to take a position against our own ordinance?
The, like I said, the contract supersedes the ordinance.
Well, I didn't, you know, I, I, I'm not in on that part of the conversation. That's between Mr. Brooke and you guys. Well, all I know is is what Mr. Hughes presented to me, and, and I just told you what I relayed back to him.
Well, we're trying to.
If you guys aren't willing to discuss this, you know, you're putting us in a, in a tremendously fiscal bad position by insisting. We, we're trying to honor your contract as it exists.
Yes.
But we also have an unwritten contract with all county employees. And it wouldn't make me very comfortable to say, okay, we're going to take two departments and let them continue with longevity with no one else. That, that's not very comfortable for us as councilmen.
But in the meantime, the contract just kept getting continued, continued. There was an option to open it.
Well, you know, that's a fallacy of county government. You've got one hand over here doing something, another hand over here doing something else.
Uh-huh.
Ray Dudley, Delaware County Sheriff. Hey, Mr. Quakenbush, uh, we was told in negotiations when we was in there that, uh, um, John Brooke represented the council. Is that, is that not correct?
No, he does not represent.
Oh, he does not? So, that was.
He did mention both. He mentioned.
He did. He did say that he represented.
Mr. Hughes represents the council.
Okay, well, then, if we're negotiations and you guys are recognizing those negotiations, why is not Mr. Hughes in those negotiations? Are they non-voy then?
We, we're not a part of the negotiations, uh, by, by, uh, how do I say it? By statute. The commissioners are the executive branch. We're the fiscal branch.
Okay, so then, then, then Mr. Brooke disrepresents the commissioners in those meetings?
I can't say that. I don't think you should say that because.
Well, I'm just telling you what he said in the meetings.
That's hearsay though, as far as working, sir. We weren't there.
No, I was there.
Well.
That's not hearsay.
I wouldn't say I'm displeading you, but I didn't hear it.
Well, I don't care what you're displeading or not, but what I'm telling you, this is Mr. Brooke said in the meetings that he represents the Delaware County Council as far as the negotiations of our contract.
I don't agree with that. Mr. Hughes, you want to help me there?
Yes, please.
Well, we've been in, I mean, Ron stated correctly. We've been in communication with Mr. Brooke and told him exactly what Ron said, that the intention was, the council's intention, as we understood it, was to recognize the longevity for those individuals who are qualified now. But that the council ordinance would supersede any future contract. But I didn't.
That, that, that's, that was the discussion, that discussion.
I think what's happening here is that there is a procedure for making financial requests to this council that, that needs to be followed. I think that's what we're looking at.
So, Mr. Hughes, with your, with your knowledge of the law, you believe that a county council ordinance supersedes a contract that was put in place before and signed by county commissioners?
That's what I said. I said that, that the ordinance would supersede any future contract.
Future contract.
That's what I said, just said.
So, I'm asking you this question then, sir. So, our contract that was signed in two thousand and ten that we are currently under, and then the ordinance which was signed in two thousand and eleven cannot supersede that two thousand and ten contract?
Uh, as I said, I think the intention is, as was part of our discussion that I passed on to Mr. Brooke is that we would recommend to the council that that be in fact the case, that those individuals who are not qualified would receive longevity.
Under a new contract?
Under the old contract.
Well, you can't, you can't change the old contract.
That's what I said. You can't change the old contract. They would receive longevity under the old contract.
So, they would receive it?
Right.
Okay. That's what we're, that's what we're asking for.
Then, then the financial side is that that needs to be presented in a proper way to the council so they can.
And what proper way is that? Right now, what we're doing, what we've been doing, and other departments have been doing?
Through the auditor's office.
Yeah, it needs to be, the request needs to be made.
How is that a request when everybody already gets it?
Because we have to put money in there to pay these guys. Somebody's got to give us the money to put in the longevity fund.
Money has to come from somewhere to pay.
That there's already, like, those people are already.
It's, it wasn't budgeted for those people.
Are you talking about just the new people?
Mm-hmm.
The people that want the new longevity, the council has to approve that money before it's paid. They approve all monies that is paid, especially salaries. So, that's what we told those people when they came to our office, that if they want it included in this ordinance for the longevity, the council has to approve it. We just don't write checks and add people into the longevity or any type of pay. The council approves the money, we pay the money. So, if they approve their longevity pay, we'll pay their, their money. But anybody that come to our office and say we owe them money, the council approves the finances, we pay the bills.
So, that's how we've done always in the past then, Steve? We'd have to come to, to start qualifying?
No, the people that, uh, under the contract for the people that already received longevity, the council sets that money aside every year for budget.
I understand that.
It says aside. But once you've got new people that want longevity, they pass the ordinance that nobody receives longevity anymore, any new people after two thousand and eleven. So, for them to change their ordinance, they have to approve it. The auditor, we're not in your contract, and we didn't sign your contract. We pay the bills. If the council approves the finances, we pay it. If they don't approve it, it don't get paid.
Well, I'd, I'd like to, uh, have a position of understanding. Gentlemen's agreement. I'll tell you what kind of a man I am. I bought a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar farm one time from a man with a hundred dollar bill instead of handshakes. And we both carried that through all the way for twenty years. I bought it on contract. That's the way I do it. But talking to you as gentlemen to gentleman, I think what I said was is that we're asking you to honor our ordinance of two thousand and eleven. If we'll honor your contract of two thousand and ten, which Mr. Brooks has indicated to you that we should do, that would give the people that you're asking for the opportunity for us to make a motion today to include them, seven people, is that correct?
There's seven, yes.
That, that would include those seven in the longevity pay. As Steve has said, we would give him authority to pay that. Where we're asking you to help us by honoring our ordinance and not insist that that clause be in the new contract.
And that has to go before the body. We can't just sit here and, and tell you that it's going to happen.
I understand that, but I'm talking.
That has to go about.
You came to us. We didn't come to you.
It's because you owe us.
Well, that's your opinion. And that's.
We're trying to save, we're trying to save county a little money. Because if it goes to a grievance, we don't want to do.
Well, I hear that all the time, you know? That's thing that goes to grievance.
This has already gone to a grievance, right?
Right.
No, it hasn't. It has not.
We, we withdrew the grievance.
No, they withdrew.
Because in the grievance meeting with Human Resources and your attorney, it was agreed upon in that meeting with John Brooke, the attorney there and Human Resources, that these people would be paid. So, we, we withdrew the grievance, so it didn't go any further. So, we said, okay, that's acceptable. We accepted that. Because these people are due the money because they, they came in and were employed under the original contract. The contract is still currently in force now. We're in negotiations for a new contract. We haven't gotten to the point yet about negotiating about longevity or anything else. That's something we'll approach at that time. We can't sit here now and say, yeah, we'll take that away or we'll, we'll do away with it. That's, it's one of the points of negotiation that we'll get to during negotiations.
But you don't understand our position, or you don't want to.
No, I understand.
No, you don't want to. You may, you may understand what I'm saying, but you don't, you don't want to. Because right there is two people that have a lot to say in that negotiation, and you're standing right there.
Right. But when we negotiate these things, it ain't like we make the approval when it's done. We have to, we have to put it in front of the body. The sheriff still has to okay it.
Well, that's three people now that are here to approve.
Well, and that's, I think that's where we're at. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking you. I haven't received anything from anybody that says this grievance has been decided except for you standing up here telling me it has.
The what, though? Are you talking about last year's grievance?
The grievance that you're talking about. You're requesting money for a grievance right now.
Ask Human Resources. They're right there. We're all the same thing together.
Okay, that hasn't been presented to us in any kind of a finance meeting or a request been made for that money to be paid and where it's going to come from. That's what we're telling you we need to do.
And these people were hired under the existing contract, so they were already on the, on the books to get paid at this point. They should have been on the books, just like everybody else who was hired in this contract gets paid, longevity pay. They, they don't get any financial mo, they don't get any money until they hit their five-year mark.
I, I understand what you're saying. And if what you're saying is true, there's a procedure for doing it. And all we're asking is that that procedure be followed, that request be made. We know where the money's going to come from, and then we approve it, just like every other transfer that we do every month.
Let me ask you a question. Why is it you're so persistent on this issue? When we're talking about people that have not even been working for the sheriff's department? We don't even know who you're negotiating for because they haven't been hired yet. I don't get that. I just don't get it.
Sheriff Ray Dudley.
Uh, no, actually, the, the two people that is on the merit side have been working for the sheriff's department, have been working for the citizens.
No, I'm not talking about those seven.
Well, who are you talking about?
I'm talking about future.
We're not talking about the future. We're talking about.
You want to talk about the contract with us, but you want to talk to us about your side of the conversation.
Where are you at, Ron?
I'm right here.
Come back to the employees that are currently that we're talking about.
I made the amendment earlier that we would honor your contract of two thousand and ten if you would give us the honor of honoring our ordinance of two thousand and eleven in your new contract, which would say that you agreed that no one in the future would get longevity, but the people that are there now will. Now, what more can you ask for?
And that's what I'm saying. I can't give you that right now because that, when, after everything's negotiated and the bargaining unit agrees with Mr. Brooke and whatever, it has to go in front of the body to be approved. I can't approve that myself. It's just like you can't vote for everybody else up here.
I can't. You're right. I can't.
I'm in the same boat.
Okay. I guess we're going to vote without orders together then.
Been there before.
So, it sounds like what we need is a request of seven lines, each line I'm asking for. That amount, and then where it's going to come from, then we vote on it, which couldn't happen until January.
That's correct.
Oh, it could happen now because that money's in the council budget.
Where?
Longevity.
It's already in the longevity fund. We spent out tomorrow for all the other county employees.
There's none left?
But there might be. I don't know how much is left, but I don't even know how much money we're talking about these people are due.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's for all seven?
That's it. They all get five hundred.
And they're all your seven?
Two from the merit unit, yes.
Okay, so how many, how much do you need?
Two merit, two nine-one, and three jail.
Oh, so you are talking nine-one-one, too?
Yes.
Because I just may where I have to.
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, unless my, my sources are wrong, there's money there. I'm not going.
There should be. As long as it's county general people.
It's county councils. It's longevity's in our budget.
As long as these people being paid are county general people.
Oh, correct.
If his or nine.
Communication or nine-one-one?
Those two would be county general.
Okay.
Because we only have very limited salaries out of the.
Nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one account.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a request or do we need to vote, or we're good?
Well, I didn't get a motion.
Who needs to make a motion?
I can't do anything without.
Do we have a, a legal opinion, Mr. Hughes, on whether we need the honor of that, uh, contract?
That Mr. Brooke has said that, yes.
Is it still in?
He has advised us that, yes, we did need to honor the contract.
I know we did make it right, nine-one-one a year or two ago when it came out. I'll make the motion. I don't know how to state it, though. Not sure how, do the correct way to.
Let me ask this. Do we have, we have anything in writing that tells us that this grievance has been reached and the amounts of money that we owe?
The original grievance was withdrawn. There is no pending grievance on this issue. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, do we have some kind of a determination in writing that says that we need to pay this?
We have an opinion from county attorney.
Is that something I can see?
I have emails. I don't have any written opinion.
Can, that's my big question for Don. Can this be done in January? Can be, it'll be like backpaid?
Well, I don't know. I couldn't.
Wouldn't we need line items?
Well, there's a line item longevity.
There's a longevity fund with the line item already in it.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem approving it, but the problem is, is I, I have nothing that, that tells me other than these guys say they reached an agreement, which I don't discount, but show me something.
Mr. Alexander, your attorney, would you, you, you agree with your attorney, correct? Do you agree with your attorney that you have on?
As long as I see something in writing that's, that tells me that, that we can pay it now.
So, you're saying when he has.
I don't have a problem paying it now.
When he has an opinion, so what you're saying is when he has.
If not, my opinion need.
So, what you're saying is when he has an opinion.
As a request, just like every other request.
Okay, so when he has opinion on something, you don't agree unless he has it in writing for you.
You guys want us to give it, give it to you in cash and let you pass it out? I mean, what are we talking here?
No, no, you're taking it in a whole different direction. All I'm doing is, they're, they're telling you that these people deserve this. Your attorney, your attorney said that the other attorney talked to him. Now, these are attorneys. They're not going to sit up there and pimp to you. That's not, that's not their way of doing things.
We need to sit there and negotiate this.
We're not negotiating, sir.
I can't do anything without a motion, sheriff. And we can sit here and talk all day, but without a motion, nothing's going to happen.
Well, can we have a motion then on?
Well, we don't have a motion.
Can we have a motion?
I don't know. I'm the president. I don't make.
Okay, well, then, as the sheriff of Delaware County and for my employees and the employees of nine-one-one and the jail, I request a motion from the council.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay this out, up to the thirty-five hundred, whatever's needed to make it hold with them.
I have the email from Mr. Brooke. Would you like to see it?
I think that's what I'm looking at right now. Is that what I'm looking at right now?
I think so.
Okay. Give me a minute here.
Give me a minute here.
I would like to make one point, if I may. This was not on our agenda. We honored your person, your employee, Mr. Brooke, let him speak. I could've sat him down, said, hey, you're not on the agenda. I didn't do that, trying to be gentleman here, and women, ladies, and, and be upfront with you people. But I can't get anything back, I thought negotiation was where you give and take, all you want's take, no give.
I do believe, I do, I do believe every, every month I come in here and we give and take, Ron.
Yeah, you take a lot more than you give.
Well, I'm sorry, but we're...
Department takes more than all the rest of county together.
You're exactly right, because you know what, and we said it before, we say it with the judges, and we say it with the prosecutor, and we say it with EMS. The crime and all that does not stop, and it is gonna continue to cost us a lot of money in our county. And if you can't, if you can't deal with that, maybe you need to move on down the road.
Well, thank you, maybe you can do it, you can deal with it.
Oh, I can deal with it, that's why I'm here, sir.
You're trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to deal with a full budget. We're not gonna sit here and argue about this, because you're not a lawyer, and I might win. I don't argue with lawyers, I don't argue with you.
I don't, I don't think you can win, you have it in the past, but you can continue to try.
I'm glad you said that, I like to hear that. I like to hear that, you guys all heard that, didn't you? The sheriff always wins, and I don't.
Can I ask something?
He said it.
You're right, I did.
How is it possible to do this?
I mean, I guess if you guys make a motion to do it, then Steve will have to pay them.
Without any paperwork in front of us of who it is, and the line, line items, and...
You guys are making the motion, somebody's gonna have to give that to us.
Well, I think that's what I mean.
I don't have a clue who the seven people are, Steve probably doesn't have a clue. I'm talking to Mary just a second, so, in your motion, I guess, you need to recognize there's so many from each department, and they all get five hundred dollars apiece.
And we have names.
Are you, are you on, Donna?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, the name should be in an email that's got it.
Why is this such an emergency that it can't be on the January?
I'm not seeing that.
You're not seeing it?
Uh-uh, I'm not seeing any names, or...
Put this on the January mail, or...
We'll show you this comment. It may not be the same thing in like seven years.
Chair rules here.
And we don't have...
I don't have a second, I have a motion, it's not clear. I would like to put this on the January agenda. It's not on today's agenda, we deviated way off of today's agenda. Does anybody on the council disagree with me on that? It's done, then, this will be on the January agenda. You guys plenty of time to talk about it with Mr. Brooke, see what you can come up with.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, you guys all have a Merry Christmas.
Well, sure.
Merry Christmas.
Throw that in, too.
Hey, Pops, I'm gonna get you a present, don't worry.
I'll bet you do, I will.
Now, we, do we have a contract with the union or something? He has, he doesn't have any employees that... Well, I know, but if it's a union contract, he has...
It's not a me-too contract, it's a different...
Yeah, I know.
Well, darling, that's what I'm saying.
I'm just asking, does Jason have employees that we should be employing?
No, they haven't had.
I mean, I know we got employees in our office that deserve it, too, so...
I tried to say that, Donna.
It's not fair that our employees aren't getting one.
Well, we're not discussing it anymore, we're going to move on. If anybody doesn't mind, I'd like to move on with the agenda, the appointments for 2018. Oh, I gotta get a motion. Scott, I need a motion.
Read your statement.
Transfer of financial.
All right, I got it here, somewhere. The way that I gave in my paper. Motion to approve transfers and amend the salary ordinance with light reductions.
Do I hear a second? Jessica, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Madge, Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
And Quaken Bush.
Yes. Okay, back to the agenda. I've compared a listing of all the appointments for 2018, and sent it to all the council members. There are a couple of things on here I would like to point out, if I might. Get the right one. Here's my new one. Talked with Mr. Pierce on the Housing Authority, we had a letter at the first of the year that Mr. Pierce was having difficulty attending the meetings in 2016. He made a couple of meetings in 2017, I talked to him personally on the phone recently, and he suggested that he is very busy, and it would be okay with him if we replaced him, and I've asked Mr. Bowers, who is here today, in the red sweater, to fulfill that term, and he has agreed to do that. And there are a couple of other changes, I'm sure you all noticed, that Mr. Parsons has been changed to Joe Boyce.
Joe's, Joe's here also, out in the...
Oh, yeah, Joe, hi, thank you for coming, and...
Before you both leave, I need to get your mailing addresses, please.
She's talking to...
Mr. Bowers.
You two folks we just mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm still a little off, I didn't have enough coffee this morning. I need a little more. Let me get back to my business here. We've changed the appointment from, to Animal Control, from Sarah Beach to Tina Reese, who was the suggestion of Jessica. Thank you, Jessica, for that. And we also changed the library board to Dr., help me, Scott.
Creasy.
Creasy.
And he's, he's unable to be here today, because he's teaching, so...
So, if this is okay with everyone, I approve, I entertain the motion to approve the list as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Madge.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes. Thank you all, good luck, thank you, too, for coming today. I hope you enjoy it, I know Mrs. Voice has been on that board before, right? So she has experience, and may be good about it, I don't know. That's a pretty tumultuous bunch over there, a lot of going-ons, a lot of going on there, but thank you for serving. Mr. Bowers, yours will just be for one year, and then you'll have to do a darn good job getting reappointed. Mr. Bowers and I go way back, we've done a lot of public service work together over the years, and I think he'll be a welcome person there, and he'll make the meetings. Mr. Pierce just couldn't do it, he's been covered up, he's in. So, we will go on, then, we don't have any ordinances that I know of, we don't have any new business. We have election of officers, I asked if you guys would like to do that today. We could, I didn't realize at the time that there's only gonna be five of us here. If you want to go ahead with that, fine, it's okay with me.
I'll, I don't know if I can do this all at once, but I'll just make a motion to retain Ron as president, and Jean as vice president.
One second.
Any other nominations? Hold on, Chris, volunteer.
What do you need?
I just need those nominations.
We need to move that they be closed, or...
Okay. Move the nominations to be closed. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Madge.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes. Council's been very, very, very cooperative this year, completed some good things. I have some good news for you. On call, on my way in today, from Mr. Vincent from the State Board of Accounts, at our last Finance Committee meeting, Commissioner Rigan suggested that possibly we might borrow money from the EBIT fund rather than the bank next year. And Mr. Vincent said that is permissible, that the commissioners would, of course, have to agree. I talked to Mr. King, he said they would consider it. The only thing that would have to be done is that they would have to change the wording of their EBIT plan to allow us the order to do that, probably with some limitations and such that we could talk with the commissioners about, but might save us thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year in interest expenditure. So I felt real good about that, I talked with Ms. Patterson in the auditor's office about it, I asked, I don't know who suggested it, but when Sherry said it, I thought, well, there's one vote, now we need one more. So Mr. Vincent has said okay, so I thought you'd like to know about that.
Why would they have to change the EBIT?
That's what he said, I'm telling you what he said.
This takes a revolution, yes.
Well, that's, that's, that's what he gave me as an answer, Donna, and I was on the way driving, so I didn't talk a lot about it.
Well, our problem, I mean, well, never mind, I'll guess it's a problem. And, oh, and I did want to tell you, of the, of the forty thousand you guys appropriated for the interest, for the payment, I only used thirty thousand. So the rest will go back, I made the payment last week, like, it's paid, I think it was last week.
I received a...
And I get this in y'all email, I forgot.
Late yesterday afternoon, from the auditor's office, saying that the highway has a problem with insufficient funds for workers' comp, is that correct? Do you have, do you have a way to transfer that today? About forgot about you guys, all the tumultuous...
Carrie died on our side highway, he said we got a check for twenty-eight thousand that would be put back in there. After talking with Donna this morning, she said that we'll have to see how much of that was spent out on this individual for this year, to go back in there. Depending what my amount is for my workers' comp this month, I think I can do a transfer on my own out of the series to get it taken care of.
Okay, good.
And how do we put the whole twenty-eight in there?
Okay.
I think we're gonna be able to, Donna.
Just for clarification, they received a reimbursement check of twenty-eight thousand, but it was a bit confusing. They have to sort that out, I guess.
I do, I do think that that's gonna be able to be put back into the highway.
Okay, super.
I'm gonna check on that for Carrie, but I'm sure...
It's going back in the highway fund, I just gotta make sure you put it back in the account.
Put it back into the line item, so we can turn around and send it out.
She's gonna get the money, it just might not be in the account.
But if it goes back in the general fund, then they'd have to come in and appropriate it.
It goes back in the highways fund.
That's what I meant, highway general.
Right.
I didn't mean the county general.
It's definitely highways money.
You're, you're saying there, you may not be able to put it in...
The account.
That workers' comp account.
Right.
If you put it in the highway fund, then it has to be appropriated to that...
But she's got other funds she thinks she can cover, you know, this, being this late in the year, she's got funds.
I looked at what I had at home, and I couldn't find where you were gonna get it, so, that's why we needed you to do it.
Well, I, I think it's gonna depend on what we have to pay out this month for workers' comp, we've got some building and liability, we've got something to, some money to work with, hopefully we can take care of the majority of it.
The number I received yesterday evening was ninety thousand dollars that you're gonna have to pay out.
Yes, ninety-one-five-oh-six.
Okay.
So if we can get all of the twenty-eight, that would be great.
Okay.
And then, I know I've got about fifty thousand, and then...
Is that for the same person, the ninety thousand? Why didn't they subtract this from it?
They just, they just don't, it's just more of a paper trail thing, they just send us the...
That would've made more sense.
Yeah, it's all from the...
I mean, we're paying out ninety thousand for this person, still?
Yeah, it's a settlement, so it'll flavor it down with the...
That's part of that workers' comp that was gonna save us all that money, remember those guys?
This guy has...
No, I meant the guys in the fancy suits, came in two years back, and told the commissioner, I happened to be at the commissioner's meeting that morning, telling us how much we were gonna save by doing it their way.
But you never know what kind of cases are gonna come.
Well, I know, but I think the, the new commissioner could change that, you're on a different workers' comp now, aren't you?
I need to, no.
You're not, you're not self-insured now, are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You still are?
Yeah, we are.
I'm sorry, you're, I'm sorry, Chris.
Well, that's, that's, that's commissioner business, excuse me. There I go. Tough to stay organized around here, you know it? Anyone out front of...
Might be your last, last chance at beats.
Well, we're, our Christmas dinner, we're paid for the big share market.
Most of them are.
And then, Scott, give it to Ron.
Are we all done jarring now? Okay, I have a motion adjourned. Hey, Ron. Uh-oh, real quick, I'll give you an update on where we're at on scanning, okay?
Hopefully it's...
So in the last three and a half months in the clerk's office, we've scanned almost eighty-two hundred court files in three and a half months. So they're now digitized, and the paper's gone, so, it's a dent, but if we can do that in three and a half months, hopefully we... That doesn't include the PSIs, which are the pre-sentence investigation reports we've done, and that's cleaned out about five file cabinets. So we're, we're making headway, finally.
We also had a nice conference at Menor's yesterday.
Yes, we did.
Tell them, tell them what that was about.
So, we've got them talking with Microvote, and working through with our update that we're going through, they've picked up the machines and everything. Once everything's done, and we pay out the next installment in January, whatever it is, when we pay our final installment, we should have around thirteen thousand dollars left in that account that I should be able to give back to you. As long as we don't have any other surprise expenses with the election, but that will give you thirteen thousand dollars back.
Just as a historical EBIT note, I was the president of the Board of Accounting Commissioners when we went from machines to punch cards. So I understand your, your dilemma of making the team over, but that was a big change.
Well, this upgrade will be, it'll be good for our end, it'll speed up the process on what you like, the machines download a lot faster, and so it should really improve that process and that part of it, and we were running on the same version from when we bought them. And the dark screens will hopefully take care of the glares for a better use of that, so, it will be a major improvement. And with the Secretary of State's office, we sure didn't want to get a, a machine that wasn't compliant anymore, otherwise we'd be looking at millions of dollars instead of a couple hundred thousand. I appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you working with us on it, spreading it out over two years. Okay, now, I have a motion to adjourn, do I get a second? Well, it says audience participation.
You got what left out, didn't you?
Were you, you Jane's proxy?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side.